Good evening. The hour being after six forty-five, it's my high honor and privilege to call the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Walpole Public School Committee to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Much like our students, we have a number of things going on today. I know there's a lot of students here to present to us who are coming from different events. So we're going to try to move our agenda through quickly and efficiently and also perhaps by bouncing around a bit. So our first order of business is going to be recognitions. Our first recognition will be our Walpole High School Senior Representative, Favour. So we'll recognize you before you give your great report, but Favour's been with us for a number of years now, pretty consistently, doing a tremendous amount of meetings with us, giving us monthly and bimonthly updates on the goings-on of Walpole High School and also observing some of the deliberations we do. I know you're bound for the University of Massachusetts, I believe.
Yes.
After, we saw you at the Speech and Debate Awards night the other day. And so this is just an opportunity for us to thank you for your participation as well and to say some nice things about you on camera. Because I know you do so much and have achieved so much and been such a great voice for your peers. So with that, we have some stuff for you, but before I do that, I'll call upon any of my colleagues who'd like to give comments as well. Ms. Gayotitz.
Sure. I was gonna say, I think being able to come to a meeting like this and speak is such a skill for someone your age. And I continue to be impressed by students and their ability to pull these very comprehensive reports and come and deliver it with such grace. So thank you so much for taking time. Your reports have been excellent. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Tunitzio.
You are always diligent. If something is happening in Walpole High School, you make sure we know about it. You're always so poised. You act like you already have a degree in broadcast journalism. And you are always kind and friendly and polite. I think you're an amazing representative of Walpole. And I can't wait to see what you do once you're out into the wider world. We're gonna miss you very, very, very much.
Thank you.
And I know your mom's gonna keep us posted on what you're doing, but feel free to come back and say hi anytime.
I will. Thank you so much.
Ms. Galavan.
That was part of what I was gonna say. One of the things that I love about student representatives who stay with us for a couple of years is just to see the personal growth. And you have grown into somebody who's ready for the next phase of your life, which is very, very, very meaningful for us to see. And you've represented Walpole extremely well. Please don't be a stranger. And we'd love to see you at different points along the way. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers.
I reiterate everything that they said, but you always are. You have such a smile on your face every time you come in. I am so impressed by so many of you students, but we thank you so much for coming in. And it is exciting to see what you're gonna do. You have to come visit us.
Thank you so much.
Now, as a tradition, we do have a certificate here for you. And we also have the book Profiles in Courage, which was written at the time by then Massachusetts United States Senator John F. Kerry. And it is a book, perhaps should be required reading right now, of famous Americans who made courageous decisions in their public lives. And so we give this to you as you move on into the next phase of your studies. And we understand that, given how much civic engagement you've had at this level, we're expecting great things. And as we said, we'll check up. We know where to get the reports on you. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll spring right in. You can give us your final Walpole High School Student Report.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. It's really been such an adventure, honestly. Yeah, I was gonna say my thank yous at the end, but I think I'll just switch up the order a little bit. I'm just really thankful to Ms. Mack in particular from Walpole High School and, of course, the school committee for allowing me this opportunity to be able to consistently speak before you on multiple occasions, like over the past few years. Being involved with my community in this type of way, it's not very common. And I'm definitely beyond grateful that I directly benefited from the love that the school committee has from hearing the voices from the students. Community engagement is so important, and I honestly couldn't imagine a better place to be more involved than in Walpole. So I'm just really, again, thankful for this opportunity. I'll give my report now. So we are just about at the end of the school year for seniors with just a mere four days remaining. Seniors will be enjoying several events that include a senior breakfast that will take place tomorrow morning, senior walk that will take place on Monday, and senior dinner in a few weeks. With AP exams and general schoolwork coming to an end, the class of twenty twenty-five is finally ready to graduate. The rest of the student body also has many exciting upcoming events. Students who have interest in manufacturing or information careers have the opportunity to apply to join the Innovation Career Pathways Program. And for students interested in community service, there was an informational meeting on Tuesday for the upcoming trip to Rhonda. For juniors planning for college, there will be a career fair held at Bridgewater State University on May twenty-ninth. And a similar experience will also take place at Massasoit Community College on May twentieth. In terms of sports, the spring teams are definitely in full session. And as we near the playoff season, we are hoping to hear many great results from various teams. And clubs, students are just as busy as many activities are ongoing. The Speech and Debate Team recently hosted their annual end-of-year showcase, where each club member was recognized for their incredible talent, and seniors were also celebrated for all of their accomplishments. The Robotics Club participated in the Walpole Day festivities with a booth and robots on display. And just last night, TRIAM hosted an induction ceremony that officially welcomed new members to the society after many wonderful solo performances. And on the same theme of music, the Walpole High School Music Department will be presenting their annual Pops Night on May twenty-third at six P M. This year's theme is "We Got the Beat: A Night of Dance and Music." The aim of Pops Night is to fundraise for the Michael Falker Scholarship Fund. Michael Falker was a previous music teacher in the Walpole School District. And after his passing, there's been a scholarship foundation that has helped many students in terms of lessons and other musical-related needs. So in terms of this concert, all are welcome to attend. That's all I have for my report. And once again, I'd just like to reiterate how thankful I am to have been able to be a part of this committee. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Favour. We'll miss you.
Questions or comments?
Leave us.
To see down the road. Moving on, we'll bounce around. Dr. Goff, your superintendent's cabinet.
Yes. So this evening, we're pleased to welcome some members of the superintendent's Walpole High School Student Cabinet. And you'll see in your packet, not everyone could be here, but I wanted you to see all the students that participated this year. I'm not gonna steal their thunder. They're like fine-toothed machine. So they're going to talk a little bit about what they've been working on this year. So I'll let you guys take it away.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving us the chance to be here tonight. My name is Sarah McCuzzi, and I'm a proud member of the Superintendent's Student Cabinet. The cabinet brings together students from across the district to work on important issues that affect our schools every day. This year, we focused on a few key areas: academic initiatives, clubs, student mentorship, and the Green Team. Each of us came into this with ideas, questions, and a passion for improving our school communities. Tonight, we're excited to share some of what we've learned, what we've worked on, and how this experience has shaped us as student leaders.
Hi, I'm Xena Girhotara, and I'm a junior at the Walpole High School. My team formed the Academic Initiatives Group because we are interested in continuing to make our curriculum more relevant and engaging. This year, we spent time learning about the aspects of our curriculum and heard from leaders such as Dr. Han and Principal Impush. We also narrowed down our focus to investigate the computer programming prerequisite for the AP Computer Science course. Being in the cabinet gave us a chance to speak directly with teachers and administrators. They were interested in our ideas, and it made us realize that student input really can influence what happens in the classroom.
Hi, my name is Dylan O'Connell. I'm a senior at Walpole High School. My team, Ronan and I, among a couple others, formed the Clubs Group because we've always loved being part of, joining extracurriculars and really developing them. And so we want to make them more accessible to all of our students. What surprised me most was learning just how many students at Walpole High School don't even know what club exists, let alone feel the urge to join them. And/or even if they do know about them, they feel like they can't join them because they didn't start at the beginning of the year. So throughout the year, we worked on ideas like a digital club directory to help people learn about the clubs and better, more diverse methods of promotion at the start of each semester to really hammer in that knowledge about clubs. A major emphasis for us has been lowering barriers of entry into club programs. This means de-stigmatizing joining clubs and making club environments more welcoming to those who do work up the courage to show up. Because the first meeting of clubs can be very intimidating, especially for a freshman joining a club full of seniors. We've also begun working with the middle school, to some extent, to vertically align clubs between them and the high school in hopes it'll make the transition between eighth and ninth grade easier for the freshmen in terms of clubs. We would like to thank Mr. Reeve for helping us vet our ideas, as he pretty much made the entire club directory for us. And with that, I'll pass it off to Ronan to talk more about club lines.
Hi, my name is Ronan McGandron. I'm a senior as well. I've been involved in multiple clubs, most notably being the president of both Best Buddies and Unified Sports Peer. As president of Best Buddies, one of my main goals was to expand the program, increase student involvement, and further spread the message of inclusion in our school community. When I attended the Best Buddies Leadership Conference this summer, I was inspired and also realized that a lot of middle schools have a Best Buddies chapter as well. One accomplishment through the cabinet has been to meet with Ms. Crawford and some of her students regarding Best Buddies and the potential for starting collaboration or their own program. When I went to her classroom yesterday, I did a slideshow presentation, and all the eighth graders who might be part of Best Buddies next year were really excited about all of the activities. I think it's so important to foster kindness and friendship in our schools.
Once again, I'm Sarah, and I'm a senior. I helped form the Health and Wellness Group with a focus on supporting students as a transition from the middle school to the high school. This transition can be challenging for all of us, and although the middle school does do a great job with transition, we wanted to bring ideas to make it even better. Through our group, we had the opportunity to meet with Principal Regirio and begun brainstorming ideas to strengthen the transition process. Some of the ideas included more welcome events and building upon current initiatives at the middle school, such as working with individual middle school teams to make the process less overwhelming. We also collected data through a survey of current high schoolers and found specific issues to target, such as helping students cultivate more time management and other operative life skills in order to adapt to the high school rigor. This experience taught us the power of student voice and how collaboration with school leaders can lead to meaningful change. It also reinforced the importance of empathy, advocacy, and taking initiative to make a difference in our school community.
Hi, I'm Vanya Singh, and I'm a freshman. I helped start the Student Mentorship Initiative because we saw that this transition to the high school could feel overwhelming. And sometimes, students need more than just guidance from adults. What really stood out to us was the importance of peer support. Being a freshman with an older sister, I know firsthand how having someone closer to your own age to check in with, talk to, and help you navigate the ins and outs of high school can make a huge difference. We're currently developing a student mentorship program that pairs upperclassmen with freshmen. Being part of this process had made me feel like I'm truly making a difference in our community. It's also helped me become more confident in myself as well. We also want to thank Mr. Connor, who helped us with this initiative.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Schmidt, and I'm a senior. My group started the Green Team because we cared deeply about the environment, and we wanted to make sustainability a bigger priority at our school. What surprised me was realizing how many small steps we can take, like composting the cafeteria or switching to reusable materials, that can actually have a big impact. We took action by making an appearance on our high school's morning news to spread our message, as well as being featured in the school newspaper earlier this year. We are also partnering with N H S to create a logo for our team.
My name is Tommy Kowalski, and I'm a junior. I am grateful to be a part of the Green Team, as it has helped us develop leadership skills, meet with leaders from the Health Department, organize and participate in events, and advocate for change. This year was the first year that the Green Team has been up and running in quite some time, so it's been a good learning experience. We built a great foundation for this team and hope to sustain it for years to come. Being involved in this good cause has reminded us that even as students, we have the power to make our schools and the world a little greener.
This student superintendent cabinet has become more than just a leadership opportunity. It's a space where students feel heard, valued, and empowered. For some of us, it's the first time we've been able to share perspectives directly with district leaders and work on meaningful projects that impact our peers. This cabinet gives us the chance to connect with others, collaborate on real challenges, and take ownership of change. It shows us that our voices matter and that we are not just future leaders, we are leaders now. For us, this isn't just a program. It's a chance to lead, to grow, and leave our school better than we found it. Whether it's academic wellness, leadership, or sustainability, we know that our voices matter. And we have shown that when students are empowered, real change can happen. We're excited to keep continuing building on this work, and we thank Dr. Goff for her continued support and believing in every one of us. This cabinet would not have been possible without her, and we're so grateful we got to learn from her how to be a good leader.
Thank you.
Nice job, guys.
Questions or comments for the Superintendent's Cabinet? Ms. Gayotitz.
Sure. If other students are interested in doing this, how does that work exactly? Because this sounds like an amazing leadership opportunity.
I put out an application at the beginning of the year. And, yep, and they can apply, so that will go out. This is a fantastic group. I mean, you guys, you rocked it, so thank you. It's been a lot of fun. And after they actually did this last week and we finished it, I just said, wow. You guys should be really proud of yourselves for all that you've been able to accomplish in this one year. It's amazing.
Ms. Galavan.
You know, sometimes we talk about things like student voice, but to hear from you guys directly about how meaningful it has been really sort of validates all the things that, you know, you would like to believe that are important. So, you know, just like we are grateful to Favour and the contributions that she's made. Your contributions are important, and I think they will live on beyond those of you that are seniors. And for those of you that are seniors, great luck next year. And stay in touch with us because it's important for us to know how the foundation you get here serves you going forward. But you're a great group of representatives, and thank you for giving of your time.
Ms. Tunitzio.
It is so easy to identify a problem, right? It is so easy to look at something and say, that's not as good as it could be, or that's a problem, or that's trouble, right? And so many people never get beyond that initial step of just naming a problem, and I mean adults as much as I mean, you know, students. The fact that you all kind of showed up and put your money where your mouth is to say, hey, this is a need that we want to fill. Can you help us do it is amazing and something that I hope that you will continue to do even beyond Walpole High School. And remember, too, that in this particular instance, I know that Dr. Goff sort of opened the door for you all by creating this cabinet. You don't need to wait for somebody to open the door. You can knock on someone's door, right? You can make a call. You can send an email. You can, you know, figure out who you know that might be able to get you to talk to somebody else that might be in a position to help, right? Like, I just want to encourage you not to lose that dedication you have to, once you see a need, try to collaboratively find a way to fill it. So thank you all for doing what you're doing, and we look forward to seeing you again.
For the questions or comments, Ms. Rogers.
I would just say that this cabinet, for me, I have such pride in listening to you, and I think this opportunity has just been incredible. And I think it's such a way for students to access, like you said, the leaders, the leadership in our system. And also, just like on a personal note, just hearing each of you, I'm a sensitive person, but I get tearful just like listening to you guys and how much you've done, how much you care is really awesome. It makes me look forward to my kids getting to high school, joining these clubs, and feeling welcome that, you know, you guys provide this. Like, I want to join the clubs. You're making it seem so great. And I just wanted to say to Vanya, as a freshman coming in and talking to us, you are, you know, that's amazing. I just hope you know that that's appreciated, that you came in as a freshman and spoke to us, and you're doing great work. But congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Nice job, guys. Well done.
Moving on, if I have unanimous consent, I apologize. I do have one agenda item that is my responsibility. And unfortunately, I have to be sent to another meeting in this building. But if we could take superintendent evaluation out of order, if anybody, if there's no objection. For folks following along at home, Chapter seventy-one, subsection, Section thirty-seven of the General Laws tells us what our role is as school committee members. We have three things we do. I think a lot of times, the community thinks we have a lot more width and breadth of our actions, but we do three things. We set the budget, we oversee policy, and we hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent. So this is thing number three that we do every year. My colleagues and I each filled out an evaluation. We use a DESI rubric, which is imperfect and hardy. And often, we really want a column in between two columns when we're doing this exercise. But it's the chair's role to move them together into a, all seven of ours, into a summative evaluation of the superintendent. More importantly, I think, we, as a subcommittee, individually have strong dialogues with Dr. Goff about how she's doing, about the goals. We'll, in the future, as we do every year, work with her on the development of her goals. And that dialogue, which we have, is really the meat of this great relationship we've had in the Walpole Public Schools. But it does fall to me to give an overview of the superintendent's evaluation. She's done very well in all seven of our colleagues' eyes, meeting and exceeding the rubrics necessary in the standards of instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Some of the actual goals that were outlined were ones around curriculum development and implementation, specifically around increased proficiency and standards in the level of math, participation in coursework to further understand and respond to individual student learning needs. There was district improvement goals around furthering the work of the new high school building project, engaging in the necessary planning to prepare for the consolidation of Burden Johnson and FY twenty-five, continuing to build the internal capacity of systems and structures to foster an engaged student culture and support and strengthen the capacity of her principals and subordinates as instructional leaders through, with an emphasis on observation and evaluations. And in evaluating Dr. Goff, she gave us a tremendous amount of data and evidence. And what we found was what I think members of the Walpole Public School community expect and have seen, that she's ubiquitous. She shows up. She does her homework. We've seen, just to kind of cherry pick some of the numerous comments our colleagues have made. We've talked about how we pretty flawlessly took two distinct school buildings, cultures, three grades, and merged them into one with a really flawless opening of our middle school. We're now headlong into a high school renovation. We've seen some strong gains and some great work in continuing to develop a professional culture that is stood upon very strong standards that Dr. Goff holds for herself and expects of her administrative team. And that's sort of the overarching overview of this. And I would just open it up to other colleagues, maybe starting with those who are on the evaluation subcommittee, just to kind of briefly encapsulate their thoughts as well.
So there's gotta be nothing more awkward than being evaluated in public. It's the one decision that came along with the law that Bill is talking about. But I think that at least we cleared the room partially for you. I think that we're fortunate to have Dr. Goff as our superintendent. And I think that, you know, when I was sort of putting together all my thoughts, I think that you're just passionate about education at all levels. I think you like being a superintendent, but I think you liked being a student, and I think you liked being a teacher. And I think that you like being a principal, and I think that all of that matters because I think it makes you an excellent superintendent. I think Dr. Goff has high ethical, personal, academic standards, but still leaves room for the fact that we have to learn from our mistakes. Like, nobody's perfect. And I think that I would encourage you to keep that balance, because I see that, and I think that that's very important. I remember a story that you told us about, once, once, getting a bad grade. once, once, getting a bad grade, and going home and wanting to tell your mother about how sad this was. And she said something along the lines of, well, that's what your teacher thought you deserved, but I bet you'll never get a grade like that again. And I think that we're benefiting from that, because your standards are just so high. And I think that, but I think that that balance of, nobody's perfect, is an important piece to it. I think that you also give us, as a board, a particular challenge, because you're very responsive to the things that we communicate to you. And I think that it's important for us to keep that line of communication very open, because, you know, there may be things that we know are important to the community, or that we just see from a different perspective. But I just think that we need to challenge ourselves as a board to maintain a high level of articulate communication so that we can help you to be the best superintendent. But I think we have the most amazing superintendent, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the questions or comments, Ms. Denizio.
The first bar you had to clear as superintendent was managing a global pandemic. And you cleared it. So, if there were a gold medal for superintendents, I think that would have earned it for you. But, you know, it really is extraordinary that that's how you were forced to start your tenure as superintendent. And then when that was done, you had to work on opening a new middle school, and you've had all these building projects, and you're also very focused on academic instruction and curriculum and school culture. I feel like we keep, you know, or I don't know if we're doing it, but the bar continues to raise, and you continue to meet it and clear it, and you show a desire to want to do that, never to rest on your laurels, which I think is really commendable. And, you know, I think that, like Nancy said, nobody's perfect. And sometimes, part of the way that you shine, or I think have the potential to shine, is when something doesn't go according to plan, and you figure it out, right? And you don't really disappoint in that aspect at all. But I agree with Nancy, we are incredibly, incredibly fortunate in this district to benefit from your passion and your dedication and your skill. And looking forward to what's to come.
Thank you.
Ms. Gaozits.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I feel like we're so lucky. Like Carrie said, the fact that, as a superintendent, you've been through a pandemic and opening buildings, some superintendents just have a district to run. And you've had all these crazy challenges to deal with, and it's just amazing. And you've risen to the challenge and dealt with tricky personalities at times. And just sometimes I think there's clones of you running around to Walpole, because you're at so many meetings. And I don't know if you sleep, but it's amazing, like, I'll hear from my daughter that you've popped into science, and then you're at, like, different sporting events and community, your community engagement is amazing, and you just care so much. And thank you, and get some sleep, too.
Well, I can't say, you know, thank you to the school committee. I mean, you know, your support is invaluable. And then just to be able to, you know, problem solve and work through and conflict resolution, and, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, in that we push each other, you know? And I think that we have, you know, a lot of respect for each other, which sometimes you don't see, you know, everywhere. And I think, you know, we've taken the time to build it. And I'm only as good as my team over there, Dr. Hahn and Mr. Prashis. So, you know, really only as good as my team, so I thank them as well.
Strong work, and a lot of great work ahead. It does fall to us, again, on the awkwardness of evaluating in public two votes. So, Chair would take a motion to accept the summative evaluation of Dr. Goff?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gaozits, second by Ms. Galavan. Anything further? Discussion. Seeing none of us in favor, opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll then call upon the robotics department to come on in. I will surrender the chair to Ms. Denizio. Maybe we'll take a minute recess as you bring the robot in. Mr. Gaffey, thank you.
And thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your patience.
Hopefully, they weren't too distracting to all of you.
Oh, my gosh.
Are we about to get pelted?
What is this doing?
Looking like we're in the line of fire here.
I don't know what they have prepared as their demo, so.
That's reassuring, reassuring, Brian. Thank you.
Hopefully, they only go towards the door, towards me.
I appreciate that. This is great.
Don't worry, it only hurts after you wake up.
Yeah. All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Brian Gaffey, and I am the robotics team coordinator at Walpole High School. And I just wanted to come in and thank you all for your support throughout the season here, and have a few of the students speak about their experiences as well. The Walpole Robotics Program has had our, one of our strongest, our best years in the program history. Throughout this season, the students worked very diligently on their robots to play this year's game, which was ocean-themed. It was named Reefscape. So, the robots, they had to pick up these 12-inch PVC pipes and place them onto various pegs that kind of represented seating of coral reef trees. And then to open up more of those pegs, the robots had to remove those 16-inch kickballs there that represented, like, an algae bloom that was inhibiting the coral growth at the time. The students worked really hard to study the game in all the different ways that it could be played. We came up with a very unique solution to this year's game, where we have kind of two different arms on the side of the robot there. Not that the students can kind of go over some more about going with it, but the, our ability to kind of handle both of the coral and the kickballs at once made our robots one of the more unique-looking robots out there on the field, out there. And we were widely considered one of the best robots in the world at scoring the kickball element. Our on-field successes and processes led to us winning many sort of engineering awards, including our program's first-ever Autonomous Programming Award, which makes us one of the few elite programs in the program who have won all six unique engineering category awards there, as well as at the World Championship in Houston. We were divisional finalists, which makes us one of the top 48 robots and programs worldwide, have about 5,000 teams there. Off the field, we also had a lot of great successes this year. We had the very rare honor of actually having two of our juniors chosen as New England Dean's List Award winners, Xena and Duthi. And the Dean's List winners are considered to be outstanding student leaders, STEM advocates, and sort of paragons to their communities. And they were kind of chosen to represent Walpole and all of New England as among the top 100 students in the world in the program. And so, with that, I just want to let them talk about their experiences.
Thank you.
Brendan, you want to go first? Let's first demonstrate this stuff. So Brendan is our senior, is one of our lead designers.
Want to demonstrate first?
No, you talk, and I'll demonstrate.
Well, I'm going to catch the ball. Okay. Hello. So, my name is Brendan Conover. I'm a senior. This is my fourth year on the team. I've been here all four years. And I joined robotics to build something, build something fun, build something cool. And I like to think I accomplished that. This is my favorite robot out of the four years. It is the most unique robot, I would say, in my opinion, just because there's no one else who has a rotating arm with a giant algae launcher. And not, we'll spin it around later, but there's two sticks at the front, and those allow us to kind of knock up the ball from the ground into our collector there, so we can actually take the algae and kickballs from the ground and put it directly into the net. Do you want to demonstrate that now? Actually, just the shooting? Yeah.
So, I'll start with demonstrating the coral. So, we'll get, I'll start off with the coral intaking. So, if you wanted to take, we would take a coral from the, a station that can just, like, a slide that, a shoot, you slide the coral in, and so. And to score, we score on the other side of the robot, which is why we chose kind of this arm system, where you could intake from one side and then score from the other.
Okay.
In addition to that, so here, you want to take the ball out, I'll intake it. So, yeah. So then, initially, we would, as Gaffey talked about, we'd have to take, first take the ball off of the reef, to then score a coral. So, we, that would look something like this. So, after we would intake the ball, we then shoot it into a.
Yeah, that definitely does.
Yeah. And then we would shoot it, and then.
So, the net, go here. The net that this guy would shoot into is about 12 feet off the ground, and.
Six foot.
Six foot?
That's the reef is six feet tall.
I'm not talking about the net. The top of the net where this would fire into is about 12 feet off the ground, and it's about as long as, like, that section of table right there. And what we would do in most of our matches at the district championships, where we got silver, then at the world championships, we got silver, is we would be in charge of doing all the algae, because something that most robots did not do this year, did not think about, is the algae. They thought about the coral, because the coral was how you got most of your points. And we saw that, and we said, hey, let's do something different. Let's make sure we can do this very well, and it paid off extremely well. So, overall, I'd like to say that my experience was great. I'm going to be going to Northeastern University for mechanical engineering next year. Super excited, and I really think this program has given me the skills to help me get ahead with all of that. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the team or advisors slash parents who would like to say anything?
Oh, yeah, I think there's a few. I think there's a few. Now, take your time, you guys. You waited.
Hi, everybody. My name is Duthi Prashant, and I am a junior on FRC 1153. On our team, I serve as the electrical lead. I'm a programmer, and I'm also the head coach of our first LEGO League teams that we run in coalition with the Walpole Public Library, who has been extremely gracious in providing resources and space for us to run our programs. I would just like to say that FRC 1153 and the Walpole Robotics Foundation has provided students like me amazing opportunities to not only build robots like what you've seen before you, but also take pride in the work that we put in for the entire six weeks of the build season and six to eight weeks of the competition season. Additionally, it has provided me the confidence to be a leader as well. As a student who is nominated for the Dean's List Award and who eventually won the Dean's List Finalist Award at the New England District Championships, along with Xena over here, I'd like to really thank the program and all of the people who have supported the program to kind of push students like us to really become our best selves. And finally, I'd like to say that it's amazing that Walpole Robotics Foundation encourages all of the students to work to start new initiatives and new programs within our own team. Throughout my time on the team, we've seen immense growth in great partnerships between 1153 and the new sister team that Walpole Robotics founded last year. And I really think that student-driven teams really provide high school students like us great opportunities to really advance ourselves. Yeah, that's all I'd like to say. I'll turn it over to Xena.
Thank you, Duthi. My name is Xena Ghethra, and I was also honored to be one of the 1153 Dean's List finalists at this year's first robotics world championship, along with Duthi, of course. Through Team 1153, the Timberwolves, and the Walpole Robotics Program, I discovered a passion for CAD and mechanical design. And this program has shaped my future and given me skills that I never thought I would have. None of this would have been possible without the support of the Walpole School Committee and School Board. Your commitment made our trip to Worlds possible and helped launch our new junior varsity team, 1119, last year. And this team is so incredibly important to us. It has given our younger students such a great chance to become even more involved in STEM as, even more than they were before. And I am one of the direct, like, outcomes of that. And I really learned, like, leadership through that team, so thank you for that. I just wanted to thank Walpole Robotics Foundation and you all specifically for investing in our growth and giving us the chance to reach new heights. And you all have seen that with our awards and medals this year. So, thank you.
Chairs are open for anyone else who wants to.
Hey. Hello. My name is Hershma Pani, and I am a senior on 1153. I, my journey with STEM is kind of interesting, where my parents originally maybe joined a LEGO robotics program back in fifth grade in Sharon, since there wasn't one, there wasn't one in Walpole for that age group. And I had, like, a horrible experience, you know, didn't like it. And so when I got to high school, I was like, I'm not going to do robotics, I'm not going to do STEM, you know, not my kind of thing. I had a bad experience, but Brendan over there convinced me to step in the door the first day. And from there, I kind of just, like, took it all the way. And I, like, wanted to say, thank you, the town of Walpole, and even the Walpole Robotics Program, for, like, providing, like, such a good space and a good environment for people to come in and, like, maybe step out of their comfort zone. You know, on the team, I was able, started off as, like, the third-string programmer, like, just still not really knowing what I was doing. But over the course of my time, I've gotten better, and I was now the lead programmer on the team. And we have won our first autonomous award this year, thanks to the lessons that my mentors have taught me, my alumni have taught me, and then for all, and also due to your support as well. So, I'd like to thank you for that.
Hi, I'm Sandhya Murti, and I'm also one of the seniors. I would really, I was really grateful for Walpole Robotics, because I initially went to high school knowing I was interested in science and physics specifically. So, and once I knew that, I knew I wanted to explore engineering, just like, different fields that involve physics. So, and then Brendan, also the one to convince me to join robotics. I was only able to join sophomore year, so I was initially very nervous about joining the team, because, you know, I wasn't there from the beginning. But it was a very open experience. I was able to dive right in, learn new things. All the mentors and other students were very supportive of me. And so, I also wanted to thank you for being supportive of the program, because of that experience, I am able to, I know exactly what I want to do. I've gone to Northeastern University for physics and computer science, thanks to my accomplishments in robotics as well. And because of that, I know what I can do. I want to do renewable energy technology. So, my experience in robotics has really helped me understand how machinery works, because I became lead mechanic, so I was able to really understand all, like, the intricate systems of the robot by, through building it myself. And so, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. Well, I'll pause for questions or comments from the committee, and then if anybody wants to come up, feel free. Ms. Gaozits.
Sure. This is really just amazing. Startling the power that this has and thinking, I think you guys might want to talk to the Celtics, because, like, we're, they can hear some of that in the past couple weeks, like, how it just all of a sudden went so quickly. It was amazing. Also, as a person who is, like, so bad with this kind of stuff, to see you guys be able to do this is amazing. I mean, I can't even hang a picture on my wall without taking out a piece of the sheetrock. So, this is, like, quite an accomplishment. You guys should be so proud of yourselves. And again, like, all so well-spoken. It's just amazing to me how we have so many leaders who can get up here in public and speak at a young age, where that's just such a skill set. And I feel like you guys are really representing Walpole and just making us so proud. And you're great leaders, and this is, like, I don't even know what to say. It's so amazing.
Mrs. Rogers?
I am so impressed. And if I heard it correctly, this was built in six weeks, and then you did six weeks. Like, that is so insane to me, that in six weeks, you're able did six weeks. Like that is so insane to me that in six weeks you're able to create this, that worked in one competition. So that's my first thought. Again, like reiterating your ability to come and speak and convey your thoughts is incredible. Getting into Northeastern, I'm sure all of you are getting into these amazing schools to do this stuff is a huge accomplishment. Those are very difficult, it's a very difficult school to get into in general and that this has opened the door to that is awesome. So, great work. I love that we've been able to be successful in so many different areas in Walpole that like it's not just strong athletics. We have strong robot, we have so many programs that are among the best of the best. So you should be very proud of yourselves.
Mrs. Callahan?
So, a couple of thoughts. First of all, I think we're really lucky to have, I would call Brian Gaffey a student, but an adult who used to be a student, who was willing to give this level of time to a program like this because I think that there are mentors who have been friends with each other for years and years and years and I think that that's an important component. I do think though, having somebody in Brian's age group is important for kids to see and the career path that he's had, I think, is fantastic. But the fact that you're willing to come back and share so much time, Brian, you really deserve a lot of credit. My thoughts are kind of in a few different parts. I'm fascinated by this and have been for years. They make a number of the parts for this machine. Like they used to have to send out for parts, but they're now, and you know, we could talk for all evening about this, but they, right? They make the plastic parts with 3D printing, but they also cut metal with that, you know, because of the design that some of the people can do using CAD. It's fantastic, the skill level that they have. So that's one thing that I just wanted to point out. Another one is, you mentioned the Dean's List, which sounds like a good thing. It's an amazing thing. Like Dean Kamen in their world is like the god of the robotics industry. He invented unbelievable things like, I'm going to be.
The Segway.
The Segway. Yeah, like wide range of life-changing things for people. So, it's the Dean Kamen Award that two of our girls won, which is kind, it's extremely prestigious. So, that's an important thing. You mentioned the fact that we have two teams now. We have like a JV team and a lot of other schools have thought, wow, we should have thought of that sooner. Because I think that that's part of what they're trying to say. It's given some of the younger kids more hands-on experience before they have to wait. Somebody want to talk about that? Oh, these, okay, so we have some pup cups here? That's their name, is the pup cups, which my family thinks is just a really, really winner of a name. But I do think that it's great for you guys who might have had to wait until you got to be juniors or seniors to get a chance to really, really dive in there. So, thanks for coming tonight. And if you guys want to say anything, you're welcome to. I don't want to force you.
Do you want us to like come up and talk?
Of course, since you offered.
I'm actually wearing the wrong shirt today because I'm showing support, but I really am so glad I joined the pup cups my freshman year. Like I've been roped in by a bunch of these guys to learn so many new things that I, if I didn't join, I would have kind of just sat at home playing video games all the time. But now I'm learning like, I feel like I have big shoes to fill for next year since I'm joining the VRC team because they built this amazing machine that can compete so competitively at the world level. And our, we tried really hard on our little thing, but we got really unlucky this year. But we've just been trying to step up and like be like them, basically.
It's great.
And when I came into this, and when I came into FRC and I joined this team, I didn't really know what I was doing. In middle school, I did Lego Robotics in an after-school program and when I came up here, I was like, maybe it's not Lego, maybe we do a bit more. And I didn't know just how much we were doing. That I would be involved in fundraising, I would get to program, I'd get to wire something, I would get to, I would get to create something and I would get to reach out to so many teams across New England, across the world, and I would get to meet so many people. And I feel like this team has really provided such like a leadership role and really preparing me for the future and what I'm going to be able to do.
It's fantastic. And I do think that other towns kind of learn from that. And that's, I have two more points. I think that you guys have been awesome because you've been helpful to people in other towns. Like Mark would come home every once in a while and say, you know, somebody from Foxborough was here tonight because their program is, you know, trying to figure some things out. And I think that, you know, Westwood, Franklin, you know, I think that that's one of the very cool things about this program. They use the word cooperatition, which I've never heard except for here. But the idea is, yeah, you're competing, but you're also cooperating. And I think that that's a skill that's going to help you really do a lot in this world. So, you make us so proud. Thank you for being here and thank you for being the robot. Because until you see it, you just don't know. You just don't know.
You have no idea how terrifying it is.
And when it competes, it competes with two other, at first, random teams. So there are three red teams against three blue teams in a space about the size of Walpole High Gym probably is the competition space. And so, there are six of these like running around and, and our robot is fast. There's even faster ones that I've seen. It's amazing. But you don't, if you don't see a competition, it's hard. So I thought it was awesome that you wanted to bring the robot too.
Yes, thank you. This is what excellence looks like. And it's not because of the technical skill and the knowledge and the hard work, that's part of it, but it's also about the reputation that this team has for excellent sportsmanship and compassion and kindness and cooperation within competition and the willingness to help others. And to go, you know, time zones away and represent little old Walpole and build a name for this group and this community, right? That's huge. So I want you all to just bask in that for a minute, right? And this group, you're never going to forget, right? Your teammates, you're never, ever going to forget what it was like to cooperate like this and create. Does the robot have a name this year?
Legato?
Legato.
It's a Dutch water dog.
To build Legato. So, just, you know, just soak it all in and be proud of yourselves. We are very, very proud of you. And if there's any more of those snazzy half-orange, half-blue shirts left over, let us know because they're pretty killer. Yes, Ms. Gao sits.
If you guys have to travel with us, how do you do that exactly?
So, yeah, our one mentor, like Mr. Dusette, he has a trailer that, is it the team's trailer?
Yeah, the team has a trailer.
He has his work van and so we stuff our pit materials, which are like two rolling racks and then both robots into a combination of his truck and the trailer. And then we, he wheels them off to competitions.
And then if it's going to Houston, we pack that into a box on wheels. That gets put into a truck with most of the other robots from New England and then that gets driven down. So you have a giant shipping truck with 30 robots and stuff inside of it.
Fascinating. I was just picturing TSI.
Well, we thank you all so much for being here. Special thanks to all of the adult mentors who give so much of your time and talents. And we look forward to seeing those of you who aren't seniors back here again in the future. Thank you. Well, if anyone could follow up robotics, it could absolutely be our Unified Arts Coordinator. So we have Mr. Bracini here to talk to us fortuitously about Unified Arts and STEM. It seems like it's going well.
Everything seems, I mean.
Joe, you should have just laughed with him.
I think you just need to throw a ball at us.
I will say that I was going to bring some students, but they're all, they're already here. Dr. Goff and the robotics team, everyone I was thinking of is doing such great things. I did bring the little W's from the high school for you, from our engineering teacher, Mr. Ritter and the kids over there. Just maybe that'll help follow.
Swag is good.
Is this for me? My eyesight's going. Well, thanks for having me. It's always great to see you. I know May is hard. It's one of the last ones, but I'm here. I'm going to talk tonight about Unified Arts and sort of how it relates to everything. And what I'm going to start with is a little middle school technology update, a STEM Academy update, a pathways, program update, but more from the perspective of how it connects to Unified Arts. I know Ms. Toby came here and gave a report on it previously and, but I will try to summarize it. I've come up with hopefully a quick little slide on it. And then I'm going to end with the high school technology. And I'm just basically giving you a snapshot of what's going on and some updates and sort of where we're going and the journey that the students will be going in the future. All right, let's see what we'll start. All right, the first thing I will say is the eighth grade curriculum as well as the middle school, it's exciting times down there. The build in itself is amazing, state of the art. The teachers are happy, the space, the equipment, the opportunities there are just endless. We spent a lot of the first year getting everything in place and going through everything and I think we're ready for next year. We'll be even better. And what our big theme is with the eighth grade is it's been a full year. So this is the first time we have the eighth grade all year and we can, we have access to them all year. We don't just have them half-year and then we can continue. So when I had them apply for STEM Academy, I've been able to have access to them all year. So I know exactly where they all are. What we're moving towards is we're trying to get the manufacturing tools and standards really into that curriculum. And by having more time, we're able to, we're building units that will accomplish that as we go forward. So this has been a great first year and we are excited about like some of the curriculum rewrites we're doing with, especially with the manufacturing tools and all the opportunities. We have so much equipment that we're learning how to use as well. And I really, I forgot, I forgot to mention that we have another teacher down there that's doing some technology. And we have Jill Masterson, our STEM coordinator. But I really have to thank Jill and Charlie and Matt and Emery, the teachers down there. They've really given it their all and have, they had a lot of stuff to deal with with a brand-new building and a lot of technology that was just showing up and trying to figure out how to get everything up and running. So I really owe them a great, you know, I'm thankful for them. I think it was a success. And I'll give you another little snapshot. They sent, so the sixth grade itself is just, you introduce programming and they don't get a full year, they get a half-year, they rotate the kids. But what they wanted me to tell you is that they're really happy with, that they get to teach them the programming skills and they're using MyBlocks, basic Scratch stuff. And this is just welcome, welcoming the kids. And you can see from the picture I brought, that space is just engaging, is all I guess I can say. And then when you get to seventh grade, more programming, more advanced stuff, a lot of 3D stuff. They're starting to connect more with the science curriculum is what we're trying to do, where it relates to our engineering stuff. And they added some more software and that's sort of the seventh grade. But the eighth grade, they had been, a lot more time has been able to be spent on the programming, the robotics features, the designing and manufacturing concepts are being introduced down there as well. And I know that we heard about the 3D printer, that which, the 3D printing seems to be where we're all going. And their space is ideal for flexible learning and they have quite a few 3D printers down there too and they're using them as well and they're building curriculum that incorporates it. So the manufacturing process, you can use wood, you can also use cardboard, but you can use the filament. And that's showing how that is all changing. So, as you can see, they've sent me a bunch of pictures of, look at, look at what they're doing. There's so much activity going on down there. Let's see. All right. I'll switch now a little bit to the STEM Academy and I know I've talked about it before, but I'll try to give a quick overview. A lot of the kids you saw tonight, they're, they either were in STEM at one point or are still in it and they're finishing. There's between seven and 10 right now that are going to finish for the graduation. As they were saying, some of them are going to WPI, UMass, Wentworth, Northeast and Providence College. Those are the ones that responded recently. And as they were saying, all the topics are in is like engineering and all these fields. And there's, someone's doing a nursing part with technology. So we're really psyched about that. But to be in STEM Academy, you have to take the 20 credits in the technology courses, but we know you're taking all the math courses and all the science courses because you are taking those for college. But to get a student to sort of pick our path, is sort of the phrase I'm going to be using today, to get them into technology, they have to give up some other things. So they have to take 20 credits, which is, you know, five credits of technology every year. And so they might have to give up some band opportunities or some other opportunities. But then they have to do a junior shadowing project, a senior capstone. The only thing I'm noticing now is the senior capstone, now that they're in college and they're all, that's the one I'm trying to get for the graduation. And they have to participate in, as you saw, robotics, math team or science olympia. They get to pick. If they pick robotics, they're in for a lot of time, extra time after school. So they are really committed. That robotics is not like some other clubs where it's one or two hours here and there. It is intense. And I'm always impressed. But STEM and robotics, they all seem to fit together. And the courses I offer at the high school and some of the middle school stuff, I give the club, Mr. Gaffey runs is amazing and all the parents and the students and the mentors, they just give all their time. And the teachers as well, we have some teachers at the high school that give their time. But then they bring it back to the classroom. So they're like, okay, this is the CAD you were talking about or the engineering and design class. So as you can see, all those robotics kids that were here, they're in our classes as well. So they're taking a lot of our courses and then the club helps them just grow even more. The current eighth graders, we're encouraging them to apply. Our deadline's tomorrow. And I've really been sending information. I've been, the principal's been helping, the principal's been helping me with her e-notes. I've had all the teachers in their Google. We've been talking about this and looking forward to next year's crop and hopefully all that information will be coming in for the next time. I'll switch again now to Massachusetts Innovation Pathways. I know this is just a program that is offered and our school applied to be in it and was accepted. And as a result, we, my program at the high school, and I think it's going to trickle down to the middle school, we really benefit. There's a lot of stuff coming, like grants and machinery and I'm going to get into all that. And basically, this program is where you take like a student, a student's, a future high school graduate's portrait, what path do they want to go on? So they might, what career interests are they interested in? What courses are they in? And then we try to add some work-study opportunities in some kind of projects. Now what you're going to notice is before, before we even join pathways, STEM Academy, that's been up and running for years, sort of modeled a lot of the pathway program that ended up being created before it was created. So I've created this slide that's trying to explain how pathways will work at the high school. And I made a tree and STEM Academy is like a branch of a path a student can pick. So the vision of a graduate, like what's their future? Well, when they arrive at the high school, by sophomore year, we're seeking them to, if they want to join Innovation Pathways. we're seeking them to, if they want to join Innovation Pathways, Innovative Pathways, they will, maybe they'll go into manufacturing or communication. We have three paths that are active right now officially. But I look at it as it's got quite a few possibilities, and it's still to be determined. And we're going to go the direction of the learner, the future vision. It's going to focus on what they want. So as they go through, they're not just going to randomly pick electives. They'll, they'll, they'll look at the path. So a lot of the courses I offer relate to the path. So manufacturing's our newest path, and they're going to be taking like the manufacturing class, for example. And the communication pathway that's up and running has the marketing course and some other courses in it. STEM Academy, of course, has all the stuff I described, work-study, we already have that, and that's for kids who are going in that path. And then there is an, there is an education path, and then the rest are to be determined. We're giving them sort of like a roadmap for their future, and it's wherever they want to go. This is the slide that I'll have here, is these are the three paths that our program is currently running. We just started it. We're at the beginning stages. And students can apply to be in the communications path, the advanced manufacturing path, or the education path. If they get in, in example, career field, they would take the marketing class if they are interested in that. They also might be taking our film stuff. They could be TV. And if you notice, they have a media literacy requirement for that. If they go into advanced manufacturing, some courses would be robotic, engineering, architect, plumbing. We don't, we would kind of partner them up for like a work-study opportunity for plumbing or something. And as a result of these, and then the education one as well, as a result of all this, we are rewriting our curriculum to meet the path or to make it, make sure we're hitting all the goals of it. So a lot of the things we're going to be offering in the future are going to connect to paths and the future vision of a learner. And then I'll just end with the high school stuff. Our technology program continues to impress. The relaunch of AP Computer Science Principles resulted in 35 people taking the AP exam today. That has been a very big success, and I owe a lot to Ms. Ruthur as well as Ms. Agostino, who's running computer programming. We do anticipate offering a technology sampling course because technology is changing so fast. We're thinking of some things with cybersecurity, all the topics. So we're at the point now with that, that we're in the discussion stages. And the way it goes at the high school is around December, we'll get it, we'll get it approved, and we'll work on the curriculum and try to offer it for the fall of the following year. But we do recognize that we need to offer something like a sampler, as, and we've talked about that before. And in the future, we'd like to offer more APs, but there aren't a lot available in this area. But we are working with education for us all, and that is an AP course possible. They're working to get an AP course in engineering. And right now, we partner up with Northeastern. We have a mentor that comes in to the engineering and design class, and they are just, they do a lot of projects. Business courses, they continue to have strong enrollment. We continue to really connect with the town, and we had Cocoa Butters in this year and TD Bank. We're trying to get as much community investment with the program so that we can have real-world connections. And this is just a snapshot of how technology program, and this is the engineering for us all course with the, and we connect with the curriculum. And these students presented, they had to solve some problems, and they used the engineering design model to solve the problem for, actually for the TV class. So they, and then they presented all their solutions. And we did a lot, everything we did was pretty much with a 3D printer or a combination of that in the woodshop. And we were able to build solutions without, we had the students solve the problems, and we didn't have to, you know, hire someone to solve the problem. And then in the middle, I put the robot wanted to show up. So that's a sample of what's going on at the high school. And I am ready for questions, and if I went too fast, I'll clarify anything you would like.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments for Mr. Bracini? Mrs. Galavan?
I would just say thank you for making it so visual. Like, it helps a lot to be able to see what you're talking about. And, you know, again, it's a really wide range with a lot of depth and thought to it. So, great work. Thank you.
It seems like you're having to be quite nimble in maintaining the STEM Academy and thinking about, you know, not only like how technology changes, but how student interest changes and how, what might be going on in the new middle school will impact sort of what students are ready for when they get to you. It seems like you're thinking about that a lot. Curious if the new space is also part of that planning?
Well, what it is, is we recognize that the technology changes. So to stay the same, you have to continuously change. So we're constantly thinking of what, like the space we have and the future, we're still, there's a lot of potential for the space at the middle school. And we have so many pieces of equipment that could fit in there that we have to, we have to connect it all. And yeah, if I left it as is, I don't want to teach the technology class from the past. We want to, we just don't know what's coming sometimes until it gets here. Like AI is out of control, so that's obviously a topic area we have to look at.
If I could add, one of the things that's exciting is, and I think one of the things that Mr. Bracini was trying to highlight tonight, is that because we've really pursued the Pathways program, it's forced us, and I think in a big way, Mr. Bracini's department, to really consider how we can meet today's learner, where they're at, but also in a more real-world sense. And I think that's what's exciting about the courses we've been developing. And even the work we've done at the middle school, is I think we've done a better job thinking, you know, how can we support our students for a real-world capacity for the things that, you know, they can do today, but the things that they'll be doing tomorrow. And I think that mashup and their ability to kind of be flexible to meet the needs of today's learners has been really impressive. And I think you, even by mentioning and highlighting, we've done, made a lot of changes at the middle school as well. And our teachers understand that in their role in technology and programming, that they really do have to adapt and change to meet the needs of our students. So it's been exciting, a really exciting time. I think you did a good job highlighting that, Joe.
Thank you. We really try to connect the middle school to the high school and make it a easier transition. And the teachers from both the middle school and the high school, they really, they're communicating a lot with each others, and it's really helping bridge that gap.
Mrs. Galavan?
I just have a question. When Carrie mentioned the space, it made me wonder, does this innovation pathway piece have something to do with how we're going to be able to use the Plimpton building going forward? Or is that sort of a to-be-determined also?
I think, I think there will be some place over there for the path, the path will, that I can't speak honestly for it, but I know that there's talks of the Plimpton space.
I'll even make this more tangible. We've ordered equipment that we're going to need space for.
Great, good.
Yes. And I think Plimpton, in our conversations with Mrs. Toby and Mr. Imbush and Mr. Bracini, Plimpton has been one of those spaces where he said, there might be some good space or even double up space and use for robotics and things of that sort, so.
Good, because that was one of my concerns about, you know, doing a high school project on a very limited budget. Would we have materials to do some of the things that we're dreaming about doing? So that's very encouraging.
Yeah, and the grants allowed us to maybe acquire some of those materials earlier than we thought, that some of those spaces will be fully ready. But that's okay. It's a good problem.
Yeah, that's a great problem. Thank you.
The grant, I took inventory today of at least six 3D printers and a bunch of filament. And there is, we have so much material, we're just, as Dr. Han was saying, we're trying to figure out where to store it for the summer, so we can be up and running for the fall. But we, that grant has really brought in, and the TV, the TV program received multiple cameras because of that grant recently. So we've been able to modernize equipment that we thought we couldn't because our budget didn't allow because of the pathway program.
That's awesome. That's very exciting.
Well, thank you so much for being here this evening. We wish you a bumper crop of eighth graders for next year.
Yeah, I hope when I get home, it's, they click, 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 and all applied.
Great.
It's great seeing everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Our last item of new business this evening is a capital update from Mr. Fresh.
So fresh off the presses is our capital request for this year. In the past, I'm more focused on what the school department was looking for and what we advocate for and what we seek funding for. But I wanted to highlight tonight just the extent of what the capital requests are, because it's not just what we advocate for ourselves. It's what the DPW and within their budgets can also open the door to some of the things that are on this list as well. So we, with the new superintendent of buildings, we're kind of figuring out, I'm working with the town administration, to talk about how we delineate what we request versus what the town requests. So a lot of the things you see below the line for DPW are more the nuts and bolts of our schools and how we, what we look for. This list was created by the principals as well as our central leadership. So a lot of the things you see, although they're nuts and bolts, came directly from the principals. So I've just started to share this with the town administration, and we're going to meet four of us to sit down and talk about the items that fall under DPW. So that will all be worked on. We'll look for funding within larger buckets to do some of those items that are on that list. Having said that, the top six items are the ones that we traditionally advocate for as a school department that we're looking for this year. Some of this will look familiar. So our number one priority, given that Chromebooks are so critical, as you hear tonight, in so many ways, technology is just something we have to have. We have not been able to, over the years, to get this internalized within our own budget. So we continue to seek capital funding for what is really essential. I think at the point at which more resources are available, we'll look to internalize Chromebooks in particular for our schools, because it's an ongoing yearly need. We were able to, with the addition of the new middle school, skip one year, and then use that money that we would have used last year for this year. So that's made the pathway forward a little bit better. But this is for the next coming year. So we usually seek $300,000 for Chromebooks. And the reason it's at 387 this year is that obviously inflation happens every year, but now we've added and introduced tariffs and the additional cost of a lot of the devices that are coming from overseas. There are going to be tariffs on them. Some of it's estimates, but I would be willing to bet we'll be pretty close to that number. So that'll be a discussion when we sit down with the capital committee, you know, why a request that's been 300 traditionally went to 387. So that's our number one item. Number two is cameras. So superintendent and I talked today about what are our priorities as a district. And number one is obviously technology. We need to provide these things for kids that they've grown accustomed to, the teachers have become accustomed to. Our lessons are fundamentally designed with that technology. But number two for us is safety and security. So looking at Old Post Road, when we rolled out the cameras, for those of you who are on the committee, we went very heavy at the high school as much as we could, somewhat heavier at the middle schools, and then we went in lighter at the elementary, because we were looking for where we had exposure to incidents happening. And so as things have evolved over time, this probably goes back 10 years at this point, if not more, we realized that there are blind spots within our elementaries that we want to address. And one of the principals, David Barner at Old Post Road, said, I've got a piece, a section of hallway that doesn't have cameras in it, and it's where the community comes in and uses the gym. It's that wing at the end. So he's asked for about $15,000 worth of cameras. We are in the process of getting actual estimates. I've estimated a lot of these, but they shouldn't be that far off. So he's going to be meeting with the vendor that we've set up. Number three is, should be a familiar one. We've asked for replacement of the rubber padding underneath the playground structures. The one at Boynton exists. It is a rubberized mat, but I thought it was interesting. I just noticed today it's 13 years old. So life expectancy is seven to 10 years on those pads. So it is beyond its useful life, and we really need to do something with that. So we are committed to that safety, obviously, of our students if they fall off a structure. Again, Elm and Feeny. Feeny, I cannot imagine how old that surface is. That playground has been there a long time. I guarantee you that is beyond 13 years. And those are our youngest, you know, fragile in a lot of ways, students, and we want to make sure that we're protecting them. So that's number four on the list. Number five, we had, you might wonder how snow removal safety. We've had a lot of slipfalls at the middle school this year. Part of that's because we couldn't use traditional ice melt because of the concrete we're still curing. We're now past that, and we can do that, but it's a large site, has a lot of sidewalks, and we only have five custodians to do all that work. So we're looking for one particular piece of equipment that'll expedite that. It'll clean the sidewalks much better, get them down to the concrete, and will be less likely to run into the same issues we had this year. So that is number five. And then number six, unfortunately, I thought about this, it's unfortunate that technology winds up at the bottom in this particular case. But having said that, the Feeny preschool does not have any interactive smart boards at this time. They just have whiteboards. So they would like to, she's asking for seven, but I'm sure she would be flexible in that request, for some interactive smart boards. These are the same devices that we introduced throughout the entirety of the middle school. The preschoolers in particular like to interact with these things versus having a projector and looking at it and not being able to interact. So with these devices, they can walk up to the device, they can manipulate it, and they can do different things that they just can't do now. We tried out, I don't know, Bill, how many was it this year? We piloted maybe nine?
Yeah, two in every building and three in one, so nine.
Yeah, so nine devices, nine of these interactive smart boards we paid for from the budget, from our normal budget, not capital. And we put them into the hands of teachers who wanted to use them. We just offered it up. Principals coordinated, teachers are using it, and I hear from Tom Reeve, it's going amazingly. So I'm sure there will be requests in the future beyond this, but we thought it would be nice to start and introduce these devices to the preschool. Would be an interesting way to enhance their learning at the preschool. So when you add up all these estimates, you come up to about 533, 533,000 in requests. And those are your priorities. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. It's a work in progress. This isn't due until June 15. I think Phil Buckley advocated for getting this done earlier. We've always, every year, tried to do it earlier, but so much happens at this point in the year. But this is the earliest we've ever had it ready. And I've already started the conversations that usually don't start for another month. So we're pretty well positioned. It's just a matter of what resources are out there this year.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments?
Just a couple of questions. The last item, the interactive smart boards, you have Elm and Feeny. Does it, does Elm have some already? Like, where are we with the other elementary schools, I guess is my question?
So what I was, what Bill and I were just talking about, those nine devices were the first devices of, those were smart boards, I believe. They were the first devices interactive to that level that we introduced in the district for the elementary schools. So those were the initial bit. This is really, should be more focused on Feeny than Elm.
That's what I thought you were going to say.
It's really about the preschool. So I would just edit that.
So right now, each elementary school has two that they move around and share?
At least two, correct.
At least two. Okay. And what we're talking about is really getting, you know, if we were to be able to get seven, that would like fully equip the preschool, correct?
Yeah. Again, it's a perfect request, right?
Right.
I'm sure she's open to modifying that.
And my other question about the snow removal equipment, should we think about asking for that through the building project?
So I did. I was heading down that path, and we are bumping up against what the, what we all agreed we'd like to return to the town from the middle school project remaining after the field projects. So it's about 1.5 million was our goal.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I did.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussions at OAC in our meetings about that. So we're trying to honor that and get as close as we can to that, returning those monies. And that would be the pool of money this would come from. So we, I backed off of a few items that we had in mind, and this was one of them. But I still think it's really important to do. But I still think it's really important to do.
Sure. No, I do too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are those, sorry, yeah, are those the, like, the broom things you were talking about that help with the snow clearing?
Yeah, that's exactly. This is a ride-on machine. It's bigger, has a sander on it, and it has a brush or a snow blower. So, depending on how much snow we get, it'll do either one, but it does it at a speed you could never do with a hand push kind of device that we have.
And honestly, I feel like with the smart boards, they're priced, like, to get seven for 20 grand would be, it feels like, I know it's still like $2,800 a board, but it feels like short money to fully equip the whole preschool.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah. We found that, yeah, I've, Tom Reeve was mentioning that the elementary teachers and the elementary students take right to it. It's almost natural.
Yeah.
Versus middle and high school, I think it's more of a learning process. Maybe the complexity is more involved, so there's more of a learning curve. But the elementary kids go right, right up to it and start touching it. They manipulate it like a giant iPad. So, the teachers really, the ones who are using it now love it. So, it's gone really well.
I can see it being huge with special ed too and just being able to, so many different things you could do with that.
Yeah.
Cool. And perhaps, I don't know if there are any ed tech grants, capital grants that might help in that, with that possibly?
Yeah.
I have a question about HVAC at the high school, which I see is under the DPW capital request. Do we have a sense of potential timing on that?
So, this summer, as part of the, the work that's getting done this summer, will be the, the wing underneath the history wing. So, that was a three-story building. We had hoped to do all three. We couldn't do it. We didn't have enough time. I don't know if the resources were there. So, this year, we're going to do the second floor, potentially the first. I'd have to look in a little more closely to see where they're drawing the line. Those are town resources and that's outside the building project itself.
Right.
So, I need to really follow up with them and see where they are with it. That's why I asked Steve. I said, "Do you mind if I put this down to the building maintenance DPW?" Because they are the ones that are going to fund it. We have some resources that we had earmarked for Plimpton. If we needed to do something there, you guys supported that. We could always do something there. But I think we had originally intended to work with Plimpton with those funds.
Understanding that it is a massive undertaking to equip the entire facility with HVAC and that it's going to need to be sort of a phased approach as, you know, resources are available. The flip side of that is that it's been a high priority of ours for a really long time. And I think it's important for everyone to know that it hasn't fallen off our radar and it continues to be a high priority. And I think it might also be helpful just for us internally to see kind of like what a phased approach in an ideal world would look like, right? So, if, if the next step would be, you know, the 1908 wing, lower floors, I think that makes sense because that's sort of the least climate-controlled part of the building at this stage. But then what would be next and, and sort of like how it might progress?
So, I think what's, so it would be the, the three floors initially. Maybe this summer we'll get that done. The next section would be the back, the math and science wing, math wing would get done, math and foreign language in the back. Science will get done with the project. The new fieldhouse will have that HVAC. One of the challenges we're running into is the existing HVAC that was done as part of the renovation is, is starting to fail. So, not only do we have to add to, we have to replace what's in there currently. So, it's, it is a massive undertaking funding-wise, but I've heard the, the mention of the goal is when the middle school, when the high school is done, the HVAC will be done. I don't know how realistic that is, but you know, I think everyone's got that in mind as a goal.
Great, thank you. Can I piggyback on that?
Yes, of course. Just what Carrie said. I think the teachers would really appreciate that, just hearing from teachers specifically in the foreign language department that are like, "I cannot control the temperature." I think they would like to know the trajectory of like who gets it first and where they are in line.
Yeah, yeah. We had a request for portable ones, the ones that we used at our middle school while we were building the new middle school. And that was something we're looking at. But then you've got to introduce more wiring and that's, that's more expensive, far beyond the units themselves. So, it's almost like we want to try to hold a little bit longer than just do it as part of the building structure itself.
Last thing I'll mention is, Mr. Buckley and I had the opportunity to do a little walkthrough with Mr. Imbush, I believe it was last week, where he pointed out some of these items that are, that are on the DPW list, none of, none of which are extravagant and all of which would go a long way toward opening up the space internally for the students. You know, he talked about study nooks and, you know, replacing some pretty aged carpeting. But we're thinking about all of the, all of the academic opportunities that are now afforded to our middle school students as a result of their big, open, flexible space. And we're trying to figure out how can we approximate some of that in some of the existing space in the high school by just rethinking things a little bit. So, it was very instructive to do and I'm, I'm sure that, I don't want to speak for Mr. Imbush, but I bet if anybody else wanted to kind of take that little 10-minute tour, he would oblige us.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much for the update, Mike.
You're welcome.
Next.
Just one more.
Of course.
I'm looking at the, the painting at Walpole High School and I'm thinking about that 1908 building. I thought we were going to get that front of it painted a couple of cycles of town meeting ago. Is that going to happen?
It was approved, actually. It was approved in the prior cycle.
Yeah.
And I think in the transition between Donnie and Cam coming in, I think some of that was kind of held and we were in winter at that point. So, I think that's lined up for the spring because I did ask about that.
Okay, good.
Because I thought opening that building with this deteriorating facade is not good. So, I was, they did confirm it will get done.
Okay, I said one last, but I have two. Do we have a sense that our list should go out a few years? Because if so, we should add the fact that both Boynton and Fisher need HVAC. Boynton, Fisher, and Old Post, actually.
It's on our multi-year list. I didn't include that here because I was more focused on this year. So, when, when you guys get the full five-year projected out list, it'll have the HVAC in the remaining schools.
Okay, thank you.
So, what I heard you say previously, Mike, was that pre-ribbon cutting will have a, a nice, beautiful high school facade.
That, I honestly, I think everyone is thinking along those same lines. It's just a matter of bringing it together and finding those resources.
Great, thank you. Okay, on to the superintendent report.
Just a few items. You know, pleased to announce that the, our budget, you know, was passed at the, at the May 5th town meeting. You know, we still have a gap. Mike and I are working on that in order to make sure that we're able to close that gap. And I just want to thank school committee and the administration for everybody's hard work because I think sometimes people don't realize our budget process starts in October. You know, we're actually even talking about it, start talking about it over the summer for the following year, so. District Archer was wonderful. For those of you that are able to attend, it's still up and, and running through the end of May. Next week, we have National Honor Society induction at 7:00 PM, one of my favorite nights. And just a reminder to families, they received an email invitation to participate in the district-wide family school climate survey. Bus applications, we'll get that in again. And we'll also get the link for parents who might want to join the virtual online session of keeping kids safe online. And we'll get that information out as well.
Short and sweet. Any questions for Dr. Gough? On to old business, the middle school building project. Any updates?
Field project's ongoing.
Yep. And do we have a target end date for the field project?
August, I think.
Over the summer.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have it, yeah, ready to go when we open for the new school year.
It's a little hard to believe that we're coming to the end of the first academic year with that building. Okay, and then high school project, we talked about it a little bit. Any, any more to add?
We're plugging along. I mean, everything's going up.
Yeah, we were over today, in preparation for graduation, making sure the site is ready and as best that we can get it for the ceremony. So, Steve Imbush was there, Tommy Hart, myself, and Representative for the Parks Department was there as well. Just looking at what we need to kind of cordon off and isolate so it's away from. We want to have all the students park, and Steve's going to send out communication about this, at the senior center, the police department across the street. Have the students park there, let them know that. Or on Ellis Street, either one, but not on the side of the high school. We want to reserve that for families. Since it's a work in progress, a construction site, that would give the same amount of spots that we've had in the past with that new additional parking in the back by Durco. We have the same number of spots, but we need it because of the disruption of the site.
Great, thank you.
On that, I would just say, you always see a lot of grandparents who want to come to graduation. So, it does mean some people with rolators, you know, and that's what I would just want to be like thoughtful about. That the fact that, you know, whatever we can do to make it accessible for especially the older generation, I think that's an important piece.
We were talking about that today, adding some handicap spots.
Good.
A more closer parking, making sure the bathrooms are accessible even though it's a construction site. That was a priority.
Or even a drop-off area, you know, I don't think, I mean, I know from, from doing this with my parents and my in-laws, you know, you just need a, a safe place to drop them off. You don't necessarily need to park right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Just even in my past life of working at a college and that graduation and the accommodate, I worked for the accommodations department. So, like, having that drop-off and then just people there to, you know, safely guide.
Yeah.
You know, if there's a few volunteers or whatever that were just there, like you just said, for a drop-off. So, because you were never going to have enough spaces for the amount of people that will need accessibility.
Yeah, that's essential if anybody's in a wheelchair and just drop off.
Right.
Do we have any subcommittee activity to report out? I guess the superintendent evaluation, which we sort of covered.
You much covered that, yeah.
Anything else?
Yes, curriculum.
All right.
Forget about me, Dan.
I know, you're off the hook.
Good point.
Our two primary topics for our curriculum meeting, one was to update on the adoption of an OSC curriculum at the middle school. Really exciting with the grant that supported that. And the second aspect was discussion around considering our middle school-related arts offerings and what the future looks like and things we can consider. Great conversation.
What was the type of curriculum you mentioned, the first thing?
I'm sorry, Open SciEd, our science curriculum. I used the acronym OSC, which probably wasn't very helpful. Middle school science curriculum that will be starting our adoption of next year accompanied by a very generous grant from the 1A Foundation. So, very exciting.
Is it being adopted six through eight next year?
Six through eight, yeah. Starting two units a year for the next three years until it's full transition.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it's awesome. Very exciting and I think the teachers are excited as well.
And the grant that they won is, is really worth noting, you know. Bill was saying, one of the challenges is adopting a new curriculum and really providing the right support for the teachers. And this grant was a big score for Walpole.
The grant gave us access to a lot of financial resources, but to Nancy's point, it also welcomed us into a professional development process through OSC, Open SciEd Massachusetts. The grants valued around $80,000 over the next three years, but I was telling Mike and Bridget that I, I would probably estimate it closer to over $100,000 because the PD that's offered is like a built-in discount. For instance, like, this is just a fun fact, our teachers, our science teachers will attend a conference, a launch conference, either in the summer or in September for four days. And it's at local hotels and we have to pay for their attendance using the money from the grant, but they can stay for free at the hotels. And it's just a, it's just a, another piece that's not quantified in the grant, but is really a fantastic convenience to our teachers.
Absolutely.
And you know how hard that is, you know, to be away for four days and so to have that as an option that's completely covered and paid for through 1A Foundation is just incredible, so.
Wonderful. It's making me feel glad we have a STEM coordinator that kind of came in last year between the new building and now this adoption. She's going to have her hands full.
But you see, I will point out.
She's the right person for the job.
Yeah, she, Ms. Masterson's wonderful, but I think, if I could just make a note because I thought about this and to your point, it goes to show you that when we do support and with personnel, as you guys have done, that this school committee so rallies behind, that we obviously benefit from that PD that support, but then we also, we get that grant because Jill applied for it. And Jill could do the work to, I mean, so like, you're just amazing how you see these personnel have multiple impacts across the board. And that investment in people goes well beyond just that person. So, I'm really grateful for it. I, I see it both with Jill and Jody almost every day in their work with staff. But I'm glad you mentioned it because it's, it's definitely worth noting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay, seeing no citizens here to make comments, we will move on to warrants, budget transfers, donations, and minutes. Would somebody like to take the warrants?
Sure thing. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following warrants. Payroll under warrant number 2543 PS. Accounts payable warrants for schools, food services, special ed, and student activities under warrant number 225055. Nope, 225044. And accounts payable for schools and special education under 225045 for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Rogers, second by Mrs. Gallivan. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Doesn't appear to be any budget transfers this week, okay?
More gifts.
More gifts.
More gifts.
More gifts. All right, so that leaves the minutes. Somebody would like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the May 1st school committee meeting minutes, the May 7th superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting minutes, and the May 8th curriculum subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mrs. Rogers. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Can we make one announcement that the election is on Tuesday? We need people to remember because we're voting on Tuesday for the first time next week.
We are voting on a Tuesday in May for the first time and some of our school buildings are polling locations, namely Fisher and OPR. So, good to be aware of as the polls are open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I had a motion to adjourn from Mrs. Rogers and a second from Ms. Gayotzitz. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.